...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll just remind those in attendance this evening that if you'd like to speak, we've got a sign up sheet in the back of the room by the door and we would love for you to take the time to go ahead and complete that. Then we'll have that since the coming period at the, towards the end of the meeting. So with that, I have item two on the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All's favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Three oh, thank you. Number three on the consent agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great. And you guys got a lot, heavy, heavy weight. Any discussion? All's favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Matters from council members? Anybody have anything they'd like to share?
A couple of comments. I had my constituent meeting on the sixth over at the French Press, had a few folks show up. As always, learned many things from, from citizens here in town and talked about things and had new questions that, that I had to raise for, for those particular people and, but always enjoy those. My next meeting, again, the first Tuesday of the month will be September the third, 9:00 a.m. over at the French Press and it's just an open meeting. Whoever's there and whatever you want to talk about, we'll try to get as much done as we can. And then if it's okay, I've got one more
Sure.
brief comment and some thoughts as we go into today's meeting. I know that we're likely to hear more about an incident that happened a few weeks ago when a hate group dropped some flyers here in town. Flyers that were clearly meant to intimidate and to threaten. In the larger scheme of things, it may have been a minor incident and there was no, you know, personal violence or anything like that, but in our, in our current context of culture and history, we can't ignore it. The question is, how do we respond? And I'm speaking for myself. I've struggled with how to respond to that, that particular incident, balancing calling out against the hate that was expressed without giving more publicity to a group that was behind it. Publicity paid for by a few cents of bird seed and a few sandwich bags. I've had trouble sort of finding the line to walk between those two, you know, calling it out but not calling more attention. It occurred to me, as some of you know, I enjoy camping. I see some scouts here tonight. I was camping this weekend. And one of the things you need camping is waterproof material. And one way to make that occur is to have a very tight weave. And I would call on us to think about that image. The image of our community as very tightly woven, relying on friendships, on conversations, on dialogue to repel things that we don't want in our community. That's not going to be easy. And that doesn't mean we ignore things like racial issues, like religious differences, like cultural differences. Those conversations can be difficult and awkward, but, but I think we have to have them. So I'll leave that image out there of the tightly woven cloth, something for us all to work towards. Cloth that will be impervious to hate spewed by groups that are morally and intellectually bankrupt. Let's make it our goal so we can proudly and loudly say that hate is not welcome in Waynesboro. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I would just, you know, take that to reaffirm and support that position. We moved from Chicago four and a half years, fourteen and a half years ago. I was very, I consider myself fortunate to have been born and raised into what the United Nations refer to as, as the most diverse community in the world. And I consider myself very fortunate for that. And one of the things that we love about Waynesboro is our common goal that we work towards and to achieve success for all of our residents and to speak up with members of our community are affected and afflicted and attacked and marginalized. I think, I know I can speak for, for council in that we don't tolerate that. We won't tolerate that. We have a remarkable police department that is thorough and diligent and effective and I'm very proud of that. And I look forward to, to continuing to build a more perfect union. So with that. Well, I've got a couple of updates and just, you know, a couple of meetings that, that I've attended. The school's back in session and this is a thank you to our teachers and administrators and faculty with, and parents and drivers for, for showing the patience and kindness as all students sort of return back to school with new circulation patterns around Kecollins. It works, really worked out really, really well. Hats off to the administration over there. Vice Mayor Henderson and I attended ribbon cutting over at Food Lion, a major renovation. I said at the ribbon cutting that a lot of folks like to show up with, to cut something new rather than, and we often spend a little time talking about renewing investments and the importance of renewed investments. And so I think we're very fortunate as a community to have businesses that still find value in our, in our citizens and our community and neighborhoods to, to make the scale of investments such as Food Lion. So that was, that was really great. The National Night Out event was, was wonderful. Well, very, very well attended. I think it's to the chief and, and all of our regional law enforcement. Really great program. Lots of kids. I think it was just conveniently worked out that it landed on the night that it was the first night of school. So like many parents who were walking into Target to buy things that we forgot for our kids, they were able to go out and, and enjoy a really neat event for, for the region. Then lastly, I had a great conversation with Timmy Joe, Timothy Joe from the Salvation Army and his wife Grace. Enjoyed lunch with them on Friday to learn more about really new and exciting programs that Salvation Army would like to roll out in our community. So look forward to strengthening that relationship as well. So with that, we'll move on to, anything else? Okay, so we'll go on to number five is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance granting a conditional use permit upon request by KRB Land LLC to allow a vehicle sales rental or leasing facility at 430 East Main Street, city tax map parcel 46-1-63-7. And I would call on Ms. Cara Johnson, our associate planner, to deliver that sound report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'm new. If you are wondering who I am.
Welcome.
I am presenting today on the conditional use permit 19348 for You Ride Today Auto Sales and Sound LLC. It's located at 430 East Main Street. This is a vehicle sales business, a used car dealership, as well as a sound installation. The property is located on East Main Street at the intersection of Broad Street and Dupont Boulevard, right there. And the existing, or the, a little background for, for what's there, there is an existing shop, a garage that was previously occupied by All Seasons Tire. Back in 2012, they were granted a CUP that, among other conditions, included removing the metal storage shed that you see there in that picture and cleaning up the, the property in general. The, the business was a tire sales and installation. And so the, the applicants now are applying for the CUP to add the vehicle sales. And there is no site plan required. The, the property that is being used is in the same use category as what was previously occupied there. The subject property is highlighted in this diagram. There, to the north, we have Fitzgerald Tire in the LB zone, which is there with a CUP as well. To the east, we have ABC Tire, also there with a CUP. North of the property, we have Geo Salvadoran Restaurant. To the west, we have Jalisco Restaurant. And then to the south, we have single family homes in the RG5 zone. And as was mentioned, this, this property is on East Main Street, which is, as you all are very well aware, this is a, an entrance corridor that we, the city has been focusing a lot on. We recently received a $2.2 million grant to do a major reconstruction on East Main Street, adding pedestrian and bike facilities. This is a corridor that the city really cares about as it's one of the major ones coming from Charlottesville Richmond area into Waynesboro. The property is in the LB local business zone. This zone is primarily meant for small scale neighborhood uses and businesses. It does not allow big box businesses or large auto oriented businesses unless granted with a CUP. It is in the floodplain. However, there's no construction being done on the property and so it's not, it doesn't fall into any of the regulations with floodplain. It's in the enterprise zone, which in general, a business of this scale doesn't really apply too much, but they are eligible for city facade and landscape improvements. When it comes to the comprehensive plan, it's in the downtown extended area. And as I just mentioned, it is one of our major entrance corridors and there are projects in the works and in future years that will be happening on East Main Street. This is the property. Took this picture earlier today. The, the applicants have been working on it and improving the site. They painted the, the storefront there. And as you can see, it's, has some nice street trees on the side. This is from Dupont Boulevard, Boulevard. And the, the staff, we see that this, this business is an asset to the community. The existing structure is set up for auto oriented businesses. The current market doesn't really support a redevelopment or a conversion of this sort of garage. And right now it's vacant. And so we see that it's better for the city to have someone in that building rather than it continuing to sit and have the, the wear and tear that comes from, from no tenant there. There, we have granted CUPs to other similar properties in the city and nearby, as I mentioned, with the, the two ABC Tire and Fitzgerald Tire that across the street. The planning commission recommended to approve with a four zero vote with the, the following conditions. First, no outdoor repair servicing of vehicles shall be allowed on the subject parcels. Two, no outdoor storage of tires shall be allowed on the subject parcels except for display purposes. Both of these came from the 2012 CUP and we, we felt it's necessary to keep it with this CUP just to, to ensure that we don't have any leftover junk on the property that it's getting taken care of. Third, the parking lot shall be reconstructed to include a planted landscaping buffer along the sidewalk at the front of the property. This buffer shall be 36 inches in width and contain an elevated and maintained planting box, a continuous landscaped hedge, or a decorative masonry wall. This is a condition that we've put on all new site developments and as properties are being reused, such as this one, we felt it necessary to help with the aesthetic and pedestrian safety. With this being a corridor that we're, we're encouraging more biking and more walking, we want to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians to use the sidewalk. And where there will be vehicles, we, we want to create a buffer in between the parking lot and the sidewalk where right now it was asphalt and then the concrete for the sidewalk and then asphalt again for the cars. The applicants have added these planting boxes, hoping to speed up the process and have you see what it looks like to have those there. They are aware that the conditions may change and they may need to do something different, but it does help with the, the aesthetic. It certainly looks much better than, than asphalt and concrete. The fourth condition is a six foot tall privacy fence shall be installed along the rear property boundary as far as the southeast corner of the building. This fence shall screen the property from existing single family homes on Dupont Boulevard. A gap sufficient to allow ingress and egress of deliveries through the alley may be allowed at staff's discretion. Once again, this having a fence there adds a nice buffer between the business and the single family homes that are to the south of it. The applicants have added a small stretch of the fence, although they were concerned about the gap that, that is left as they will have trucks delivering goods and vehicles. They wanted to make sure that they could have access to their parking lot. The planning commission decided to have that statement of allowing it to be at staff's discretion. We may need more guidance from the city council on specifics with, with that gap that's left. And the fifth and final condition is backflow prevention and cross connection requirements must be met in accordance with chapter 86, article two of city code. This is something that we are requiring of new buildings. It is a valve to ensure that our drinking water is safe from the, if there's a pressure drop in the water. So this basically protects our, our city waterworks, public health, and the applicants have already been installing that as well. So in conclusion here, the, the recommended conditions from the planning commission, they voted four zero to approve the, the conditional use permit. Are there any questions?
I have a question about the, the issue of the gap in the fencing.
Yes.
Is there some standard gappage that, that we'd be talking about? Is it 30 feet? Is it, I mean, is there something for us to work off of?
20 to 30 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. Is what we, what we had felt was sufficient.
Got it.
Now, is that length too long for their particular property as far as allowing the trucks in and out, to come in and out?
Too long?
Or like, like are they having to shorten that?
The...
The fence?
Okay. So right there we have, I'm not sure how much that gap right now is currently.
Because that's the fence that they installed?
They installed that section of the fence, yeah.
Certainly more than 20 feet.
So before that fence was not there and they've added that?
It's hard to see at the angle.
Yeah.
So I think you have about 130 foot property line in the back.
Okay.
And so about 100 feet should be a screen between them and the nearby residential property. If you figure a travel lane on a highway is generally 12 to 15 feet wide, you'd need a bit more than that to maneuver a truck off of, of an alley. So we figure 20 or 30 foot gap.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Awesome. Great presentation. Thank you. All right. So no additional questions. I'll open up the public hearing.
So no one has signed up to speak, but it is our tradition to allow the applicant an opportunity to address council if they feel like they need to add anything to the staff report. So call on the applicant.
How you doing?
Good.
My name's William Anderson.
This is Eric Brooks. That's my business partner. We are the owners of the You Ride Today Auto Sales and Sound. And I just got a little presentation of my own. Just to get a little background on myself. I've been doing car stereo, car electronics for, I see my son's 21, so probably 25 years. I've worked at Crutchfield. I've been manager out there for about seven years. And I had my own business in Charlottesville for the last five years, all about car audio, which I experienced a pretty good level of success there. So I just want kind of, the little presentation I got going on right here, I want to show you guys some of the stuff that we've done and some of the ideas as far as additional improvements in the future that, that we're committed to doing also. All right, so, so the first improvement we've done, of course, we talked about the plan of boxes. We built the plan of boxes. We're more than three feet off the, off the sidewalk. That's something we talked over with Luke, the planning commissioner. And we know it was a little bit risky, but we, we went in and did that. Did a lot of research on something that's going to look good, that's going to work, work well for that site. We use perennial flowers. They're supposed to come up every year and actually get a little bit taller than what they are, okay? And they extended to the length of the lot to the, the first interest coming off the main, uh, main street exit. So like I said, that's the landscaping we done. Bought our own dirt. Pretty much did most of the work ourselves. And we've got a lot of good comments from some of the residents that walked by and seen us working. And they, they seem to really like the plant, plant boxes. They said it looks good. So that's the part, we also put, put that up in front of the main building. Just so, my son took most of these pictures, so he got a really good picture.
He's got some skills over there.
Yeah, he's pretty good. So, and then with the building improvements, we did paint windows and doors. That's us painting the trim, put new doors, there's new windows in there. The whole outside's been painted on all sides of the building, including the garage door in the back. That's the broadside there. So it went from that to this right here. We're talking about the back fence idea. So we, we already went up with the fence. I think that's a, so that's a 16 foot fence. From the, the first planning commission meeting, we were talking about, you know, from what you guys might want to do if you need to add or, or not add to it. Our whole idea was if we bring in vehicles in, we don't want to hold up on Main Street or hold up on, on Dupont Boulevard. We'll make sure that we can come in and actually drop off our vehicles inside the, inside the lot. So, you know, we're a car dealership. We offer serial and accessory installs to our customers. We're not a salvage yard. We don't want to look like we're boxed in where it looks like it's a salvage place. We want it to look nice, look clean, looks, you know, we're going to have really nice cars there. So we want to make sure that, that it works out. And like I said, we don't want to hold up traffic while bringing vehicles in on trailers. Future improvements we're talking about, new pole lights, outdoor security cameras, pavement repair and replacement in the future. And we're also doing an interior revamp. And like I said, it's a cost of due business. So plan of boxes, windows and doors, exterior paint, actually doing the plumbing for the backflow and for the things we're trying to, trying to do inside. And the fencing, the fencing costs too. And that's just the estimate plus for the license and zoning app and all that good stuff. So in closing, we've, I've done a remarkable improvement. We've had some really good feedback from a lot of people that's walked through there. We're committed to invest in long term in the city of Waynesboro. And it costs to open a business. So, you know, we're, we're, the approvals that we've already done, we're kind of taking out of our, our startup to get some of our stuff going, you know? And we've tried to meet some of the, some of the conditions for the CUP. Like I said, we've dipped into our startup costs for additional improvements. And, you know, thank you for all your support. From, from a lot of the feedback, like I said, from a lot of the people, they're happy to see that building get revamped like that. And they're happy to see a new business come in. So you guys got any questions or anything?
We are too.
Good.
Looks like you all did a fine job with the improvements on the property. So...
Thank you.
And I will say, so guys, eight years on the planning commission, three years on council here, and that's the finest presentation that I've ever had an advocate do. That was great. That was really helpful.
Well, thank you.
That was really helpful.
Good.
I know that you had that investment with, you know, the initial with the plan of boxes. And so if, if there was some appetite for, you know, obviously you want it to be a success and we would want it to be a success. And I'm not, I'm not a landscaper, right?
Right, right.
But, you know, working with staff to, to figure out if there's any adjustments that wouldn't, that wouldn't overly burden you, would it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, just, like I say, it's, it's just the cost.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, just the cost. And, you know, we've, we've been working on this building now for the last, you know, couple of months.
Okay.
But we haven't, you know, made any money.
It's been a curse for some.
Off the, off the, off the building yet. But like I say, you know, definitely long term, any type of improvements, we're, you know, we're dedicated to, to do that. Because it looks nice, you know? It's in a really nice spot, you know, it's coming into the city of Waynesboro, you know, and on that corner right there, we want to be like the, you know, kind of the face of, of, of the, the city. So...
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. And are there any additional questions for staff? Is there a motion or discussion? What about, if there's adjustments to the landscaping that needed to be made, could we, could we modify the, the term to, to say within 12 months of opening to, to, you know, working with staff to, to make sure that, you know, it's a success for you. It's, you know, it's, it's a, one thing is we've had, you know, some, there was a, a dealership that did not put the scale of investment, they're not in the city anymore, but they didn't put the scale of investments that you've already clearly done. They, we had, it was on some planning commission at the time, put a, a plan to requirement and in about two, I don't know, two, three weeks, it was toast. I mean, everything was dead and it, and it never got replanted. So that's why the maintain is on there. So we don't want it to be a situation where it's not sustainable to support plant life and you're just rolling out money left and right to put new plants in there all the time. We want the bedding, bedding to be successful. I'm, I'm not a landscaper, but...
I may defer to Mr. Bowman, but I think they, we could do something like that. If this were being done with a typical site plan under the, the landscape ordinance of the city, the applicant would be bound to make sure that those plants survive for a year. So in other words, when you see new plannings go in and, and new businesses around the city, we have a year that we can go back and say, if this shrub has died, you have to replace it and that sort of thing. So I think there's probably something that could be crafted along those lines. And then as well, I think I would probably work with Luke to figure out a fence that will both work to screen between you and your, your neighbors there to the south and, but is maybe, you know, a more affordable design. Something maybe a little more open or something like, you know, slat fence, vertical slats or something along those lines. So does that sound acceptable?
The condition becomes part of the zoning and, and so if there is a condition that plants be placed there, that's a continuing condition and the requirement to maintain them would, would be part of it. If they were to die, they would need to, to be replaced to satisfy that condition.
So if we, we gave them a year to establish that planting program, that way he has, he has the ability to get some cash flow in.
Correct.
Get some head nods over there. All right, what's up?
Do we think that we need to revise the condition at all? Or do you think it's acceptable as it stands?
Let me, can we pull back up the slide with the condition language on it?
It says a maintained planting box.
I, I think it's acceptable as it stands. If, if there's a concern about whether the plants will do well or not, I, I think that if they did not, that they, they wouldn't be, first of all, they wouldn't be landscaping, planted landscaping if they were not alive.
Yeah.
And then also maintained planting box.
So as presented, it's adequate?
That's correct.
Okay.
In terms of the, the wall at the back, I mean, is the language there clear enough? If I can ask a question maybe, was the intent to lengthen the segment you have or to leave that piece on its own?
Well, from the first meeting, I think that, from the minutes, I think it was 12 to six feet or something. You know, what is it? Like it was like three feet. Yeah, but that's, when you go in the back, it's just, it will be hard to maneuver a trailer around that to get in that parking lot. Because right up against the building, you'll see that's customer parking, like right up against the building. So it's like 10 foot back from the building. So if you get the fence out and you get a car there, I mean, it's just hard.
Get it back in.
You've got properties in the back. You can't cut over in that area yard to swing wide to get in. So only other option would be... So our only other option would be to either the street or Main Street. So that's why we started with 16 foot, but the fence is built to where we can add if we had to, but just make things a little more difficult.
And like I say too, you know, we're talking about the aesthetics, how it would look. You know, just if you come in from that corner, and you look off to the left looking at the building, and just imagine that this fence just goes all the way back to that back building. I mean, this doesn't look, to me, it doesn't look inviting. A fence like that, or, you know, especially even if it's a chain link fence, that's a little bit worse. What's typically, that area will be open anyway, because we'll park the cars off to the side and off to those front. Because like Eric said, that's customer parking up against that building.
So with that, need a motion? I don't know if there are further questions.
I guess my question is still, and I'll defer to folks that have better knowledge of this language. Does that fence meet the condition? And if not, what, you know, where do we stand? Because we don't wanna sort of set it up and not have an agreement, whether you've met it already.
Well, bearing in mind that the condition really exists to buffer a business use from the next-door residential use. And so that would be from, you know, noise or those types of things. Now, if your delivering, if your delivery truck is on the alley, then the resident isn't gonna be, the fence doesn't block the residential use from what's probably, I would think about, the noisiest thing that happens on the site is when trucks are coming and going. Mr. Anderson or Mr. Brooks, how frequently do you have deliveries with I'm assuming this is a car carrier that's coming to the property? Or is it more like UPS trucks that are bringing your supplies for stereos? Or what kind of deliveries are we talking about?
Probably both. You know, hoping to have lots of cars being delivered, because that means like lots of cars being sold.
Right. And they always come on some sort of a carrier?
Yeah.
Right. Either way, it's a tricky proposition, because the, you know, coming off of Main Street, you know, that's a big vehicle to, I'm assuming, would have to back into the property there. You're not gonna swing into Main Street, so to some degree, the fence doesn't serve probably its most essential purpose is to, you know, is to protect the resident from from noise. That would, from what I could tell, that'd be the noisiest thing that would happen on the site. And it's gonna happen on their side of the fence. So on the one hand, I'm not sure what the purpose of the fence, it doesn't meet its intended purpose. I think the staff's recommendation would be that the fence would extend further down the property line. But having said that, I recognize, well, if the trucks coming and going on the alley, the fence isn't protecting the nearby neighbor from that noise. And I think we would assume that, you know, an alley can be used for those purposes, that the city code doesn't prevent the use of the alley as long as the vehicle can get in and out of there and doesn't damage trees or the alley itself.
And there is traffic that goes up and down that alley.
Yeah.
So if we were, you know, once we do get the trucks in, because mind you, we're actually pulling this out a lot. We're actually getting further away from
But that's why you need that extra space to be able to back it in there, you know? Yeah, again, my concern is, are we if we accept the fence as it is there, does the language of our recommendation conflict with that? Because if we're saying that that sounds reasonable, given what we're talking about, I don't wanna set it up that it's not in compliance.
Ms. Johnson, did the planning commission have an opinion on the fence as it was constructed?
So when the planning commission met, there wasn't a fence there at the time. And so they were, they were kind of the exact discussion that they wanted it to be a buffer from the single-family residents. But the truck being on the other side, you know. They'd also suggested having a gate of sorts.
With slides?
Rather than leaving an opening, having it open up.
I mean, it seems like that's the only solution if we were to look at all those specifications and what's required. It's like, seems like that would be the only way to go. Like a sliding gate of some sort.
Can we go back to the aerial view of the property? Do you gentlemen happen to know what the space is between the corner of the building and the corner of the lot? Because that's really, I mean, we talked about 120 feet, but part of that is the building. How wide's the building, maybe?
I'm thinking it was I think it was like 80 I wanna say 80 feet to the parking spots.
Well, here's a thought. That the nature of conditional use permits is that they can be revoked by the petition of either the zoning administrator or the city council if there's either a violation of the permit, or help me here, Jordan. Whether the permit is violated, or whether the, if the use itself becomes egregious, can the council move to revoke the permit?
The council can move to revoke the permit if the conditions of the permit are not met. I don't know about if the use itself becomes so egregious. That's something we'd have to look into.
Okay. I think what I'm driving towards is, again, the purpose of the fence is really to protect the nearby resident and give them privacy from a business use, protect them from light and noise and things of that nature. And so, but if the truck coming and going is probably the most intensive thing that happens on the property, and it's on the opposite side of the fence, the fence isn't serving its intended purpose. If this were a property that was having a change of use, then the zoning ordinance would require you to build a fence. There wouldn't be this discussion because but because it is the same use essentially as an auto ordinance used to the previous one, it's simply a condition of the permit. So I think the council maybe is advised to look at it and say, if you feel like that truck traffic is not unacceptable in the setting, then I'm not sure that the fence serves its useful purpose. And then, you know, perhaps we shouldn't be as hung up on it, or we would allow something similar to the language that's in there that would allow the staff to come back if we receive complaints to say, you've gotta correct this problem, and here's the latitude to be able to correct it.
Sounds reasonable.
Does that seem?
Other ideas of like, you know, what if you came down, because we're assuming you have to come down Dupont into the alley, whereas, you know, if you were traveling east or west on Main, you could come down Bath Avenue, go behind Jalisco or Enigma, or whatever, the three names, and then enter the property, you know, through Bath Avenue instead. So instead of doing a wide swing to the right, you're doing a left turn turn into the site. So then, your fencing is really where you have right now. You could actually extend that further on to the property and still have, you know, some sort of access.
You don't have cars that will stop it, it's in that parking lot.
Well, I know it would require flipping it over to like, maybe you store the vehicles that you're selling on to where the fencing is presently that you've installed. I don't know. But, hey, that's why I was hesitant to mention it, because it's like, I don't wanna design it while we're in it. But, you know, it's one option. I think the other option is that, I mean, the cars are gonna be moving, right? So like, you know, if you, could we do the unloading on Bath Avenue and then just and in front of the, right behind the restaurant there, there's already like a large parking area, and just unload the vehicles there and then have them circulate through the residential neighborhood that way or something, but I don't know, I have, I like the staff's discretion, and I think that something reasonable can find out, and you all certainly seem I've got great confidence.
Ms. Johnson, could you return to the condition, please? Yes. Mr. Anderson or Mr. Brooks, as is drawn, basically, it's asking that you would work with the staff to come up with some sort of an acceptable solution here. Is that an acceptable condition to you, gentlemen? Or is the fence a showstopper for your business? You gentlemen have worked with Mr. Judee to this point. Do you feel that, again, what's really that the condition is saying that it's up to the staff's discretion? So that would be working with Mr. Judee and the zoning administrator to to work out whatever problems even over time might be. If something arises, we have complaints from the neighbors, we have an out to work through a solution at the staff level. And you wouldn't come back to the city council or planning commission for that?
That sounds good.
Alright, with that, we have a motion.
I will move to accept the conditions as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Actually, I'm sorry, the ordinance that we've introduced and seconded will be brought forward at our August 26 meeting, so we don't
Thank you, gentlemen.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Looking forward to it.
Number six.
Number six is to hold a, hold the second public hearing to receive comment on housing and community development needs at the city for a specific community development block grant funds, and consider adopting a resolution approving the FY 2019-2023 five-year consolidated plan and the FY 2019 annual action plan for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In 2013, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development determined that the city of Waynesboro is eligible to receive annual funding through the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Communities Program. In August of 2013, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the city's status as an entitlement community. And tonight, we're asking the council to adopt a similar resolution to begin the next five-year cycle, and then also to approve the first annual plan under the new entitlement program cycle. Historically, prior to being an entitlement community, the city had received community development block grant funds through a competitive state application process. And that is that every few years, the city and the Redevelopment Housing Authority would make applications. And those applications would go into a pool of whatever other localities were competing for the same dollars. We were fortunate that through the years, we received a number of the competitive grants. They tended to be larger, but more spread out over time and less certain. And at least in my memory, those community development block grant funds were used to perform housing and infrastructure rehabilitation in the Port Republic Road area, to provide affordable, single-family housing development, the Jackson Street and Fifth Street area, or Jackson Avenue, Fifth Street area, to perform a housing rehabilitation project in the Arch Avenue and Market Avenue neighborhood, to remove a flood-prone trailer park that was located off of Arch Avenue, and to pursue activities in the downtown revitalization project. As noted, entitlement communities receive annual funding that's allocated according to a HUD formula, which uses several objective measures of community needs. And these include the extent of poverty, population figures generally, housing overcrowding, and the age of the local housing stock. HUD awards these grants to entitlement communities to carry out a wide range of community development activities directed towards revitalizing neighborhoods, economic development, and providing improved community facilities and services. A priority of the CDBG program is to improve the living conditions and economic circumstance of low-to-moderate income individuals. Low-to-moderate income is defined as individuals who are at 80% or lower of whatever the locality's median income is for a family of a certain size. So in other words, if in Waynesboro, a family of three has a median income of $45,000 a year, then 80% of that is $36,000. So these funds are to be directed to individuals or families who are at that income or lower. And generally, these funds are used to provide decent and affordable housing, to improve basic neighborhood infrastructure, and to create jobs. Waynesboro will receive $182,768 in federal fiscal year 2019-20, that is, the federal fiscal year beginning in October. And over the last five-year period, the city's received about $925,000 in entitlement grant funds. And again, the national objectives are to provide to benefit low-to-moderate income persons and families, to aid in the prevention and elimination of slums or blight, and to meet needs of a particular urgency. And those tend to be, CDBG funds can be used in disaster relief. So in other words, cleanup following a flood event could activate CDBG funds in certain neighborhoods. The specific activities that can be pursued with CDB funds include the rehabilitation of single-family housing, neighborhood revitalization measures of various types, construction of public facilities and improvements, basic infrastructure like water and sewer facilities, stormwater projects, and park improvements. Public service within certain limits. In much larger localities, CDBG funds are applied to health clinics and things of that nature. The funds aren't allowed to be used to supplant the city's operating budget. So in other words, you couldn't use these funds to supplant a portion of the police department's budget or the fire department's budget. And then revitalization activities in targeted business districts such as the downtown area. In the city of Waynesboro, this is a map of the city. The areas in red, according to the most current, now, not as current as it was, but the most current 2010 census data, that there are sufficient number of low-to-moderate income individuals and households in these areas that CDBG funds can be used in any of the areas that are colored red on the map.
I wanted to go quickly through some of the past five years' activities that the city pursued with the CDBG program funds. And generally, you'll see that they fall into categories of housing rehabilitation or homeownership opportunities, some homelessness prevention activities, neighborhood infrastructure improvements, downtown revitalization improvements, basic city park improvements. And then a portion of the funds are provided to the Waynesboro Redevelopment and Housing Authority for administering the grant. And I won't go through each of these, but I just wanted to show, generally speaking, again, you'll see these things of the dollars being used for housing rehabilitation, for homeownership opportunities, and other sort of basic infrastructure projects throughout the city in the LMI neighborhoods.
the city in the LMI neighborhoods. Some of the projects, we've been able to leverage the federal dollars with local dollars by having the work completed by our public works crews. Typically, in those cases, the public works, that the federal money is buying materials, paying for any equipment rental costs that might be incurred, and then we're providing labor to do those projects. And they tend to be basic street improvement projects, sanitary sewer, waterline projects, stormwater projects. In the current fiscal year, the, the active current fiscal year, we've recommended that the funds be directed to the Port Republic Road neighborhood, that we've certainly completed a few projects up there over the years, but we're trying to focus on that neighborhood. We've had some meeting with the neighborhood, either public meetings or meetings with representatives of the neighborhood. We have reallocated some previous year's funds that were unspent to be able to complete a neighborhood plan for Port Republic Road. Hopefully, that would be a plan that would have some durability beyond this year's expenditures to guide future public investments in the area. But we've also proposed work to be done to the historic Fairview Cemetery, to clean up some properties around Elton Street, and perhaps pursue some other historic projects. We also have allocated a portion of FY 18 money to continue downtown streetscape work around the city-owned parking lot on Market Avenue, and then to pursue one downtown facade grant for the Shenandoah Valley Arts Center. The goals of the upcoming consolidated plan, that is, the, the five-year plan as broadly stated, one would be to continue neighborhood revitalization in the city, to provide suitable living environments through safer, more livable neighborhoods, greater integration of low-and-moderate-income residents throughout the city, and increasing housing opportunities and reinvestment in deteriorating neighborhoods. The second general goal would be to provide affordable housing, and that is to provide decent housing by preserving and increasing the availability of affordable housing in the city's residential neighborhoods through home repair, rehabilitation, and infill development to reduce discriminatory barriers and increase the supply of supportive housing for those with special needs and transition housing for homeless persons and, and families. And then again, to expand opportunities in business districts throughout, through job-paying sufficient wages, small business development, activities that promote long-term community viability and entrepreneurial skills to empower LMI individuals. For the 2019 annual plan, we're recommending that these dollars be focused on the basic city neighborhood area, and again, we've had meetings in the basic city neighborhood, and Planning Commission hosted a public meeting at their last meeting. One, we would develop, again, a neighborhood plan. Two, then, would be to provide infrastructure improvements in basic city. Lighting is an issue that was raised in a lot of the, the meetings that we had, and then to continue business district revitalization. And then, again, a portion of the funds are used for program administration. That's the budget that we've outlined for the, again, federal fiscal year 2019 annual I don't know if it's appropriate to mention at this point, Mr. Mayor, because I'm under the impression that there are folks that came to speak to, at least a rumor that the, there are properties on Commerce Avenue that would be converted to mini warehouses. And the fact is that the properties that Fishburne owns are not zoned to have, to have mini warehouses. We don't have an application for, before the city to construct mini warehouses there. So, it would take an application on the part of, of the current or future property owner to rezone those properties, and then that application would be subject to public hearings, much as the public hearing that folks just witnessed.
Any questions for, yeah? Yeah, I would just offer that, you know, I'm, I'm very excited about, you, you notice the, the first few slides of allocations under the CDBG program in past years, they were, they were great projects, really good projects, sort of scattered all over the place. And so, I am particularly pleased that, you know, this sort of would mark year two of being very intentional with the CDBG program, whereas, you know, I would, in, in a perfect world, you know, commit resources wholly each and every single year. I'm, I sort of appreciate that, developing a plan, a neighborhood plan, that where we revisit and continue to make investments so that you're sort of getting that on both sides, so one on the Port Republic side, and one on the basic city side, be intentional with, with those recommendations, and a game plan, right? Because if you don't have a plan, you're just wishing, so things have gotten better. So, yeah. All right. With that, I will open up the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Are there, are there any additional questions for staff? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the five-year consolidated plan and the FY 2019 annual action plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven is to consider approving street closure request by the Parks, Department of Parks and Recreation for the annual Christmas parade to be held Saturday, December 7th, 2019. Mr. Hamm?
Sure. Mayor Short and members of council, as the mayor describes, the parade is scheduled this year for Saturday, December 7th. We'll follow the same route as in most recent years. I placed this on the regular agenda to a great extent to draw both those in attendance and the listening public to the fact that our Department of Parks and Recreation endeavors to deliver quality facilities and quality services and quality programs. And one measure that the participating public can contribute to that effort is by observing sign-up times for if you intend to participate or wish to participate in the parade. This year, that open sign-up to participate is August 19th through November 25th, and each year, we are asked to accommodate folks who have missed the deadline, and you can imagine, as we're a week away, we want to be friendly and accommodating and cooperative, so we work very hard to include them. But it is disruptive to the planning process and can be disruptive to the implementation. So, again, we want everybody to participate who wants to participate, and just be aware that if you want to be in the, the parade or enter a float, sign up to do so runs from August 19th through November 25th. And our business this evening is for council to approve those street closures in the downtown area.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. With that, maybe we could create a, like a Facebook event or something, and we ask random, any sort of.
Sure.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the street closures?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number eight is to consider appointing Mr. Frank Kinnearly Jr. to the Valley Community Services Board for three-year appointment ending June 30th, 2022.
I don't have anything to add to that, sir.
Is there, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Kinnearly?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, A, is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a career and technical education grant in the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars to the school funds to be used to purchase specialized furniture for the new CTE annex. Mr. Hamm?
These are flow-through grant funds.
Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Okay, we'll bring that up at our next meeting. Item nine B is to consider introducing an ordinance to appropriate Project Hope grant funds in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars to the school funds for salaries, materials, and transportation costs. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item nine C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a school improvement grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars to the school funds to be used for support, staff stipends, development materials, classroom substitutes, and online assessment and monitoring programs at Kate Collins Middle School. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Item ninety is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating a school improvement grant in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars to the school funds to be used for support, staff stipends, development materials, classroom substitutes, and online assessment and monitoring programs at William Perry Elementary. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Item ninety is to consider an ordinance appropriating funding for Valley Academy Regional Alternative Education Program in the amount of four hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars to the school funds. Any questions?
Clarification of a point earlier, I think this is a conglomeration of Waynesboro funds and Augusta County funds that we're just re-appropriating.
Yeah, for the benefit of, of, of those that didn't attend the work session, we, we, these are, a joint program with Augusta County, and so we've received those funds, and we're funneling those funds back to the school division. Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. All right. Number ten is communication and correspondence. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items this evening. The first being, I would like to call the council's attention and the public's attention to an award that our Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission received for operating, administering the Bright Transit System, which is a small transit system that serves here in Waynesboro. It's connected to a larger system, or it's a component of a larger system that serves Stanton as well, and connects the two communities, and actually provides service northward to Blue Ridge Community College. There's exceptional work that occurs regionally and locally on a regular basis, but I was struck by this particular award. It's the Robert M. Dvorsny Best Practices Award that was awarded, again, to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission at the summer conference for those regional commissions. Recipients were Bonnie Rita Sell, the executive director at the CSPDC, and Ms. Nancy Gorley, who is our transit manager at CSPDC. And the Bright Bus is a small urban public transit, transit system that operates in Stanton, Augusta County, and Waynesboro, as I indicated previously. It's a remarkable service in that CATs and other iterations of Bright have been in existence for some time and have remained a service in our community and have improved both in service level and quality, even during periods in which financial resources were scarce. And I thought it was a testimony what, to what can happen, or what is possible in a community when elected officials stand behind and prioritize a project, staff work innovatively and creatively and cooperatively with other localities and with regional agencies to pursue solutions that, absent more financial resource, are difficult to achieve, but also that this work is of such a high quality and standard that is recognized as exceptional among services in the Commonwealth. And the, during the presentation, it was noted that the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission is the only regional planning district commission in the Commonwealth that operates a transit system, and probably one of the few in the nation. And I thought that that was an achievement that deserved acknowledgement to the Planning District Commission, but also an acknowledgement and testament to councils through the years who have prioritized that service for our community and the work of staff and the CSPDC to sustain and even improve it over time. So, that's the first item I have. Mr. Shaw is going to provide an update on the Florence Avenue Bridge.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city has received bids for construction of the Florence Avenue Bridge. We're reviewing those now during our due diligence. The bids did exceed the allocation that we have from VDOT for the project, so we're assembling funds and will return to you, I'm sure, at a future date if necessary. But as we stand today, we expect to issue a notice of award for bridge construction on September the 12th, and we would have a pre-construction meeting with the preferred vendor in October and begin construction on November the 4th. The construction is expected to take one hundred and eighty-seven days. Our contract calls for a fixed date of completion with a fifteen-hundred-dollar-a-day liquidated damages clause, which basically means, other than for bad weather, act of God, terrorism, that sort of thing, the contractor is bound to complete by May 8th, or they would owe us damages for each day that they go beyond the completion date.
The other item I have is that, following up on the flyer incident, I've had several members of council request two things, first being sort of a summary timeline of the incident and the city's action in regard to that incident, and then, secondly, some information regarding the authority available to not just the city of Waynesboro, but localities generally to enforce in circumstances like this. And borrowing from some of Dr. Hostetter's remarks, some of this information may be uncomfortable and difficult to hear, but it's my duty as the city manager to deliver the facts and the truth of the matter, so we'll work through that. I'll hand it off to Mr. Jordan Bowman, who will talk a little bit more following the timeline about local government authority. So, the incident was first reported, first reported incident to the WPD on July 13th at twenty-two fifty-six hours. That report was, has, EOC incident notes that three bags, three KKK bags were thrown in the lot by a pickup truck. Later on that same day, July 13th, at twenty-three twelve, there is a post made by the property owner on a Facebook page. Same day, July 13th, twenty-three thirty-one, another Facebook post. The following day, July 14th, at eighteen twenty-six, the, the city is, receives a second report of an incident where the pamphlets or these bags were delivered or thrown or deposited in the Park Road area. On July 15th, at twenty hours and thirty-eight minutes, the owner posts a video of a truck on his Facebook page. On July 16th, Waynesboro Police Department detectives and a crime analyst review the video, looking for leads to follow up on. We, the department was able to locate a truck similar to the one in the video, but is subsequently determined that it is not the suspect video, excuse me, suspect vehicle. Same day, July 16th, the department consults with the Commonwealth attorney and confirms that the incident should be regarded as a littering offense. The WPD begins monitoring social media accounts for the suspect and/or leads. On July 16th, there is a News Leader article about the incident. July 17th, the owner, victim participates in an on-air interview with WHSV. On July 22nd, RISE, RISE holds a rally outside of City Hall. And then on that same day, the WPD advises the city manager that the investigation is closed, that there are no additional leads or suspects on which to pursue additional investigation. We were also advised by, I was also advised by the WPD that there were six similar reports, that is, of KK flyers left on private property in the last five years. On 7/23, as we begin to have a conversation internally about what enforcement vehicles are available to the city of Waynesboro and other local governments, we begin to examine other local ordinances and opportunities in that regard. And I think, before I hand it off to Mr. Bowman, I would say simply that, again, the behavior, the speech content of the pamphlets, no matter how repulsive or offensive, doesn't violate the law. And our police department exists to provide safety and security to the community. They are a terrific agency, but have a, an exceptional closure rate when they are provided adequate evidence on which to base an investigation. But in this particular incident, again, this is the But in this particular incident, again, this is the difficult part, no matter how repulsive or offensive you find the message of the pamphlets to be, it's regarded under the law as protected speech. So with that, Mr. Bowman will give us some information about what can local governments do to curb this type of behavior, if anything at all.
I'd like to advise you that the city has the power to prohibit this type of hateful and offensive speech, but I can't give you that advice. We're all fortunate to live in the United States of America, where there's freedom of speech under the First Amendment, and in addition to protecting the speech that we do agree with, unfortunately, sometimes the First Amendment protects speech that we, that we don't agree with. Pamphlet or leaflet distribution is an activity that has heightened protection under the First Amendment due to its tradition of, you know, being a forum where people express ideas, sometimes provocative ideas. There is a great deal of case law, probably hundreds of cases across the nation, that deal with similar situations where there are pamphletters or leafletters. The city cannot legally outlaw distributing pamphlets or leaflets because they're protected speech. Furthermore, city ordinances limiting or regulating that activity must be neutral with respect to its content. The city cannot prohibit one category of leaflets simply because city elected officials, city staff, or society disagree with its content. To quote from-
I'm sorry. If we could, if we could just out of respect for everyone in attendance, so we could hear what our attorneys are sharing with us, if we can just kind of-
Y'all should have been talking while people were talking too. So y'all should have been just as respectful, you're expecting us to do. You two were looking stuff up, we all should have been listening.
Well, I think we're trying to share some important information.
And what the people that were talking to you all, when you all were doing that, also was trying to share important information that you should have found important, because they were talking to you as the mayor. I'm sorry, I'm gonna sit here and be quiet, but I just wanted to object that, because I observed that, and it bothered me that you all too were looking at stuff and doing stuff. You're the mayor, you should have set a better example. And now you're looking at the people to set the example that you didn't set. But now I'm gonna be quiet, so please don't, just continue your talk.
Well, I, I hope you feel better. Thank you.
I do feel better.
Great, thank you.
I hope you felt better.
To quote from the United States District Court for the Western District of Virginia, which is our, our local court here, in the Drago versus City of Charlottesville case a couple of years ago, "The government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because society finds the idea itself offensive or disagreeable." The city is able to impose contraint neutral regulations, provided that there is a content-neutral governmental interest that does not outweigh the freedom of speech. When the city does impose those limitations, courts will examine even those that are content-neutral to make sure that there are available forums for all types of ideas and expression. So the city does have several ordinances that are relevant. City Code Section Fifty-Six provides that leaflets must be affixed, that they can't blow around in the street. City Code Section Sixty-Six dash nine provides that you can't throw many types of things, including leaflets, off onto the street or public or private property. And so those are generally, and I know this is frustrating, it's frustrating for me to give you this advice, but those are generally litter or trash type ordinances. I know that's not the answer you'd like to hear, but that's what the law is, and this is an area where the law is, is constantly evolving and developing, and we'll continue to let you know if there are any changes.
Any questions for staff?
So that's all I have under communication and correspondence.
Very good. So with that, brings us to item seven, which says in comment period.
Sure. Mr. Robert Hudlow.
Hudlow, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Robert Hudlow, three oh three North Delphine Avenue.
Great, and I just want to make a point of clarification, so we'll, this works just like a traffic light. So green is go, yellow, please sort of wrap up, and then I'll read if you conclude your comments.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Well, this has been a really learning experience. I've learned a lot of things I didn't know. Anyway, I moved to Waynesboro in nineteen fifty-nine, and that entitles me to being a son of Waynesboro. I was schooled in Waynesboro. I graduated from Waynesboro High School in nineteen sixty-five. Went into military in nineteen sixty-seven. I am a Vietnam combat veteran. That's good for something. I'm not really sure what yet, but it is. I became disabled this year due to my exposure to Agent Orange and PTSD. It's been an honor to live in the city of Waynesboro, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here to discuss, Mr. Shaw, the information that he put out on the three-hundred block of Commerce Avenue. I live right behind the old Southern Rose Tattoo Parlor. That building has been a bank, it's been a grocery store, it's been a tattoo parlor. I've been there for the last seven years, and I've seen it go downhill. My opinion is, he who owns it now doesn't care for it, and I'd like to see something done about that. I've heard a lot of rumors, a lot of innuendos about the disposition of that property. I'm told that Fishburne Military School now owns it, and the plan was to raise it and to build storage units. I'm very much against that. I'm the only, with the exception of Mr. Frazier, who lives on that property, I'm the only landowner around that property. And so I am greatly against any kind of storage units. And Mr. Shaw, you were, you were very clear on what is required for that to happen. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I believe that that building has significant historical value. It was one of the first buildings that was built in the Basic City area. The Basic City Mining and Land Company built it. It was here before most of Waynesboro was. I do believe that it has significant historical value, and that should be preserved. I do, I understand that there was a document to raise that building. If that's true, you need to reexamine where that is. So that's where I stand on it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Deborah Rogers.
Good evening.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deborah Rogers. I live at nine zero one West Eleventh Street, Waynesboro. I'm also from Basic City. I went to church there, where I was a Brownie and Girl scout. I went to the First Winona School. My first love died on the railroad tracks, right in Basic. My grandfather got his hair cut in Basic with my brother. This is not rumors that Mr. Shaw said, "I was there, I was present." I, I've seen it, I've heard it. Fishburne is intending on selling that property. It is historical. I have many documents. In July of nineteen eighty-two, it became part of the state register. In September of eighty-two, it became a national, it became a national historic landmark. I am asking you guys to please not allow Fishburne and Roger Willetts to come in there and destroy the rest of Basic. I know a lot of people have come before y'all, and you have allowed buildings to be demolished, to be sold off as non-historical. On the, if you're on the railroad tracks on the left-hand side, used to be hotels for the railroad. The, Waynesboro would not exist today if it wasn't for Basic City's steel and coal. It supplied four-fifths of the United States of America, four-fifths. It built our railroad tracks. I'm asking you to preserve the rest of it, because it is becoming a slum area. So I'm glad to hear that you guys are putting forth some money to make this, you know, area a little better. But, and I was very glad to see that with these guys that are, you know, having flower concerns and, you know, beautifying, and you guys spent so much time on that, and I appreciate that. Now I would like for you guys to turn your attention on Basic City. I know you said you had like a hundred and some thousand dollars. Let's bring Basic City back, because without Basic City, you guys wouldn't be here, Waynesboro would not be here. Mr. Clay Frazier was given a house by J.B. Yount. J.B. Yount had that property for many, many years, and he wanted to maintain that area as historical, he loved it as well. Due to some mix-up with wills and other things, now they're trying to boot Clay out, as he's been living there for sixteen years, he's raised his family there, and he has maintained that property for sixteen years, in the historical manner in which it was given to him. So you guys have definitely enlightened me. I should have come to more meetings, and I will attend more meetings from now on, but I really would like for you guys to save these properties. Put it back on the register. I do have a copy of the state register and the national register, if you guys would like to have a copy. These are historical landmarks, and I'll be more than glad to give you that.
Appreciate it. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, if you have a copy to give to Miss Portal, it doesn't have to be this evening, but if you have an opportunity, that would be wonderful.
Thanks.
Mr. Clay Frazier.
Mr. Frazier, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Clay Frazier, and I live at three-three-two North Commerce. I have lived there for like sixteen years. I have paid my property taxes, water bills, and received all my mail here. I raised my children in these homes. J.B. Yount was oldest, dearest friend of mine. It's hard to talk about it. He gave me this house now, and Fishburne and Roger Willetts wants it, they can tear my house down and build storage units there. Before J.B.'s body was called, Roger Willetts sent his son to my home to break in. I sent him away, then Roger Willetts and others came back and cut the locks and went in the back room and took what they wanted. I asked that they got everything that they needed. They said yes, so I put new locks on the doors. And hear nothing from them again until they had a buyer for my property. I am asking you to save my home from being tore down and replaced with storage units. My house is part of Fairfax Hall, and from the time of your please stop this corruption in my city. If J.B. could come back to life right now, he would change a lot of things. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Pam Gibson.
Gibson, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Pam Gibson. I live at seventy-four Heiser Tanyard Road in Churchville. I came tonight to talk to you about standing up to the KKK. I think that all of your citizens in Waynesboro have the right to feel like you have their backs. I feel like black people have the right to know that white people have their backs, and that's why I went to Charlottesville, July seventh, twenty seventeen. I faced cops with guns. I was in the very front row with a close friend, very front row, and then the KKK was behind them. It was a little scary, but not terribly scary. Then when it came to August twelfth, and I remember I was driving my car and I was trying to make my decision, am I going to go? And I thought, well, this one's going to be a free-for-all, and of course, we know it was. And I thought, we're going to be, quote, interspersed with KKK. I thought, oh, I don't want to be interspersed. And then the more woke part of me took over and said, oh, yeah? You don't want to be interspersed? You mean like the only black student in your class? You mean like the student in the wheelchair who can't find a bathroom at JMU? You mean that kind of interspersed? You're going. So I went, and we know how it turned out. We know it was violent, we know it was scary, that kind of thing. But my point to you is that you don't have any more choice than I had, whether to, whether or not to stand up to the KKK, whether you use the law. We're talking about picky points about the law and losing sight of the bigger issue, which is that this is a hate group that truly and really wants everyone except Nordic white people to disappear from the earth, one way or the other. When you read their websites, that's what they say. And the KKK, of course, says they're not a hate group, they're a love group, because they love the white race. Well, that's just great. Their flyers are not trash, they're not litter, they're recruitment tools. They're looking for white people with flimsy identities whom they can mold into their way of thinking and distort them even further. So it seems to me that that's dangerous. I understand why black people would feel terrorized by this. I'm hoping that it will do something, even if you're constrained by the law, you can make a public statement. Two years ago, Stanton did that exactly. I can't read her whole thing, but the last two lines of Carolyn Dahl's statement, "I believe I speak for the vast majority of Stantonians when I say that hate is not welcome here. Let's continue our progress together and uphold our city as a friendly place where every person can live freely and thrive." You can do that too. You can do something like that for your people. Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
I'll state my name, but I will not state my address. My name is Dewan Bellamy. I'm here speaking on behalf of the original Black Panthers of Waynesboro, Virginia. I just want to comment a little bit on the dialogue y'all gave on the KKK presence around here. One thing that, that kind of disgusted me, it was a couple of things, is the fact that you said that it might be a minor issue for a couple cents spent on some bird seed. It doesn't matter how much it was spent. It was the fact that it was a hate crime. It was targeted for hate and for recruitment. Another thing, you said that you grew up in a diverse community. As some of the older folks would say, what's that got to do with the price of tea in China? That don't mean nothing, that you grew up in a diverse community. The fact is, the hate is still here, and it's still being distributed, and nobody's doing anything about it. Yes, I am a part of a Black Panther organization, but we don't promote hate. You don't see us throwing our flyers, hiding when we throw them. I'm going to bring them to your face, because only cowards hide behind their rhetoric. And of course, we know you're not going to do anything about it. It's because the KKK is known as a Christian group. Yes, they have a charter with the Masonic Lodge. So we gonna be, we gonna be real about it. Another thing, sister, you had a lot to say about offense, but you didn't have a lot, you didn't have a lot to say about the KKK. That is the most disgusting thing I've ever seen. And the fact that y'all sit here like it's not a problem, like it's not affecting these kids. I have children come to me all the time, asking me, do you see what the KKK is doing around here? I said, yeah. I said, I see it a lot. But one thing we gotta realize is, nobody's going to do anything in the city council about it. So that's why I started the Black Panther Organization around here, because I'm going to protect our youth. I'm going to protect our community. We don't need to help.
Ian McCray.
McCray, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Ian McCray, six twenty-five Rosser Avenue. I'd like to share my personal story of arriving in Waynesboro as a business owner here. I operate a business up the street from the Southern Rose Tattoo Shop on Commerce Avenue. My office is at four forty North Commerce Avenue. Growing up in this region and traveling throughout the area as a, as a young person, I remembered the iconic Southern Rose Building. And after sixteen years of renting, in twenty thirteen, I was looking for- And after 16 years of renting, in 2013, I was looking for a property that would allow my business to continue to grow. And I looked up and down Commerce Avenue because it seemed like the type of place where somebody who, you know, needed a lot of space but didn't need something that was retail in nature could get in on the ground floor and grow. So, I agree that this block needs, I think, a future vision. I'd like to be part of the solution there. But I think that the scale of the buildings on the block is very conducive for small businesses to start. I think that the historic nature of the buildings makes them attractive for a sensible redevelopment, and it's worked for me. So, I now have 22 employees. I've now been in the building now for a number of years, and I found the neighborhood to be very walkable with a small post office and very convenient to the interstate. So, I'd certainly like to be part of the solution to making that neighborhood, you know, more a vital aspect of our economy and really being the second downtown for Waynesboro. So, I'll provide a personal contact information. My email is ian@encomputers.com, and my cell phone's 540-294-1116. If I can be of any help in improving the neighborhood, please let me know. Thank you.
Mike Donovan?
Mr. Donovan, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly, thank you. Mike Donovan, we operate a national pro bono law project at 2016 Goose Creek Road in Waynesboro through the Sherman Stoltz Law Group. It's interestingly enough, the largest pro bono legal program in the country, provides over 70,000 hours of pro bono legal service across the country for immigrants. Interesting for you to know, since it's in your city right here. I just wanted to let you guys know, you know, I think the Waynesboro police represent the best that the Shenandoah Valley has to offer. In the last 35 years, the Waynesboro police haven't had a fatal shooting of an individual. We have some police departments that can't say that in a week. And the fact is, the Waynesboro police and the Commonwealth attorney in Waynesboro, again, are the best that the valley has to offer. And we don't really publicize it very much, but we do have a civil rights law firm that files civil rights lawsuits against cities and counties. And Waynesboro, for the last three years, has been our top-performing city in the lowest number of complaints about your law enforcement, and that you should be very, very proud of. But I don't think you should be proud of what happened tonight. And the reason I don't think you should be proud of what happened tonight rests in a couple of comments. And I'm sorry to call comments out specifically, but some comments need to be called out, not because they're hurtful, but because in trying to be helpful, they're perhaps condescending or perhaps they demonstrate a disconnect that further alienates a community that's desperate to connect to you, okay? And so, one of those comments, Dr. Hostetter, was when you talked about the difficulty between walking the line between condemning the message of hate and giving attention, perhaps PR, to a group that doesn't deserve it. And I believe that to be a sincere thought, but what you don't understand is that these, many of these people don't have the option to ignore it, and they don't have the privilege to make it not mean something to them because their very lives are at stake when this type of hate permeates a neighborhood. It isn't just about bags with bird seed. We have kids, white kids and black kids, going to school together days after this is happening. They're talking about it, too. Everybody in the community is talking about it, except you. Everybody in the community was talking about it when you weren't here, and now you're here, and you spent 25 to 30 minutes talking about plant boxes and the length of a fence. And you've got people here worried that their kids are going to be snatched up or murdered by racists, which by the way, is not out of the realm of possibility as it's happening every day in this country. And all they want you to do is do something. And I understand, I understand, and I believe in the First Amendment. I, in fact, rely on it. I believe in the First Amendment. I understand that you have to protect it, but you could do something. You could pass a resolution. You could do something. You could speak to it. You could make it the first thing you talk about when you know people care about it. You could do something, anything, I don't know, something to show these people that they matter to you because you didn't do that tonight, and that you shouldn't be proud of.
Mr. McGuffin, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Chanda McGuffin, 644 Wadi Lane, here in Waynesboro. Y'all see me almost every meeting, so you know who I am. I was here two years ago, the same thing, and this time bought some more people. Can y'all stand up who came with me? Just stand up. So, the reason why I had to stand up, y'all sit down. Reason why I had to stand up is because we bought some more people this time. And I've had this conversation multiple times with city council, multiple. You guys spent an hour, an hour and 15, 20 minutes on your agenda. You said you didn't have an agenda. The last meeting is why you canceled. You had plenty to talk about because you could have came and talked about that stuff you just spent an hour and 20 minutes talking about, the flower beds. Because you know what? You told us tonight, you really do not care. You really do not care. Dr. Hostetter was the only one who came to the rally. Dr. Hostetter is the one who reached out to me. Nobody else did. Yes, Rise held a rally. Rise is to give voice to the black community. And I'm not going to shut up. I'm not going to stop coming down here. I'm going to keep coming back. I ain't going to come back by myself. And if we have to bring these people every time and make y'all sit in here and listen to us, because listen, I'm not having any more private meetings. So, don't call me and ask me for any. I'm not meeting at no coffee shop. I'm not coming to the library. I'm not having any more private meetings with any of you. I'm coming here, making a public statement, and have a public meeting. I will not have any more private meetings because those private meetings has Port Republic Road looking like the inner city over there. Y'all have met with those people over there for years. They no longer will even come down here because they're tired of telling you the same exact thing. You guys, Luke Jade, sent me an email, went down the line. He basically told me, hey, Chanda, and paraphrasing, this is what I got out of it. We not going to do anything y'all said. We going to do what we want to do, and you all just going to have to accept it. But if you have something else to say, call Luke Jade. Trying to tell me not to come back down here. Well, I'm back down here because that was unacceptable, that email, and all of y'all were on it. It's unacceptable. Luke Jade says he's going to get, that you all going to hire a consultant. Mayor Terry Short says he doesn't want a consultant. He wants us to go ahead and do the projects we got to do over on Port Republic Road. It's, all it is is a stall tactic. We're not stalling anymore. The Florence Bridge is over there. Y'all have given us 15 dates when that's going to be completed. So, we going to give you a motion tonight, put a feather in your cap. We want that bridge renamed. Since it took 10 years to get it up there, we want the bridge renamed to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Bridge. Since y'all asked us about signs...
Mr. McGuffin, just to remind you, you're out of time.
Since you asked us about signs, that's a sign we want on the bridge. I figured it would run out of time. On me.
Ms. Fitz, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sharon Fitz, and I am a resident of Waynesboro. A lot of what I had to say have already been covered, but I will say these two things. When we talk about freedom of speech, there are certain things that's not protected under that. And if I was to call in here and make a bomb threat, you'd be at my door and I'd be arrested. So, I don't know how a bomb threat compares to someone basically threatening your life or your safety or your sense of safety in your own community. So, freedom of speech has its limitations. The other thing I wanted to say was that when the KKK did what they did, they were testing to see if this is fertile ground. That's what they were doing. They weren't just trying to get publicity. They were testing to see if this is fertile ground. And when you speak out, which I appreciated that you all started this afternoon doing that, but it would have went a long way, and it would have made more and meant more if you'd have did it when it first came out. So, I just wanted to leave that with you, something to think about. Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anitra Bellamy. I live in Waynesboro. When city council canceled the meeting citing no topic to discuss was a blatant slap in the face to the black and brown community. We all stand here as a collective to say to the city council, we will not be quiet. We will not sit down, and we will not stay in our place. We will be a voice to those who have none, and we will stand up to the elite even if it makes you uncomfortable. You were asked nicely the first time to handle the situation about the flyers. Your refusal to address the issue shows all of us your lack of respect for the black and brown community and your cowardness to face us. For some reason, the council thinks that the underlying causes and our concerns will be held in a radical manner. We will not let one person's voice define us. My community has many voices, and all we want was city council to listen and understand our concerns so we all can work together and reach a better understanding. But you proved that history has shown a resistance to black and brown mobilization. The giant pushback we receive from the majority white establishment shows that you ignore us when it comes to our issues. So, for us to expect more from you, that was our fault. We trusted you, Terry Short, to at least be a stand-up man who showed leadership even when the establishment came against you. So, I'm asking all my black and brown people in this room, the only way we are going to see change in this community is to sit up on that city council. We need representation, and we can no longer sit by and expect these people that smile in our faces to stand and speak for us and our voices. We can no longer stand by and expect that that one brown face up there speaks for all of us because all skinfolk ain't kinfolk. Our concerns are not going to be heard unless these people here, because they made it obvious by canceling that meeting in July. They are not willing to stand with us and listen to us. So, one person should not be the voice of us all, but we all have to be the voice. We all have to be a voice. We all have to stand up because the unity of a black and brown coalition is the biggest threat to the racial politics in America.
King Calafani?
Calafani, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
My name is King Salim Abdullah Calafani. I live at 905 Lakeside Drive, Suffolk, Virginia 23435. This meeting was of such importance, I drove those four hours. In fact, I went by Richmond and picked up my colleague as well. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, for such a time as this, it is of paramount importance that local governing bodies speak with authority that the KKK is not welcome in Waynesboro, Virginia. The climate of hate in this country and in the Commonwealth of Virginia has been turned up to an intolerable, unconscionable, unacceptable, and unfathomable level. Please don't be concerned about giving any hate, any more undue publicity. Hate is receiving enough free publicity from the Office of the President of the United Please support the citizens of Waynesboro. Rise and the Waynesboro NAACP's request to make a statement that hate is not welcome here and back that up by investing the resources that most of these communities direly need. The Public Policy Division of Nexus Services stands ready to assist city council at developing constitutional language that is effective and makes council's position on hate crystal clear. Now, I served as the founding managing director of Americans Resisting Minority and Ethnic Discrimination. I served as the executive director of the Virginia State Conference for 23 and a half years, and now as Public Policy Director of Nexus, which has offices all over the Shenandoah Valley. We stand ready to assist you in this effort, and we want to just quote Sister Heather Hyer, and she said, "If you aren't outraged, you aren't paying attention." Let's show these citizens that you are paying attention.
I apologize if I messed this up, but Ciara Castor or Ciara Carter?
This is G.
Okay.
So, it's Gyra.
Gyra.
I'm Gyra Carter.
Address for the record, please.
Yes, I am a citizen of Waynesboro, Virginia. This is my first time, and I guess I should thank Mr. Short because I wrote him a letter. And school is a sociology project. I had to write him a letter, and he did not respond. So, that let me know that the city council really didn't give anything about my desires, my thoughts, my needs, anything. I was just somebody who voted him in the office, and after that, who was I, you know? But as a parent, which I have become in the last five years, everything I talk about is in regards to my children. So, or children, period. I've always been an advocate for children. I've always worked where I try to do things for children. I'm going to read from this little flyer. It says, "Child abuse and neglect hurts more than our children and family. It hurts the entire community." By you not hearing what we're saying to you or you saying that that literature is not covered as a hate literature or that it's not important, and that's the way you make us feel, is that we were not important enough for you all to take action. The man said y'all didn't meet on it until the 23rd, I think. Y'all began to examine it on the 23rd, but it happened on the 12th. So, as the citizens of Waynesboro, when somebody called the police department, you all, especially Mr. Short, should have been right on top of that because that was a civic action. That was against everybody. That was against the community, not black people, not white people. It was against everybody. It's not a black or brown issue. It's a worldly issue. I hate to use the thing and just talk on my kids, but my kids are black men. So, they're going to come up in this world as, well, they're black boys now. They're going to come up as black men. So, everything I do, I have to focus towards their livelihood, not my. So everything I do, I have to focus towards their livelihood, not mine's. I've been mistreated, abused all my life because I'm a loud mouth, as we've seen. I say what needs, what I feel needs to be said. I say what I think needs to be said. But I'mma always stand up and speak when it's in regards to my children. And what we're talking about is not just the adults. You all are neglecting the children. You all have no consideration for the children. The parents that are scared are causing the children to be scared. Trauma lasts a lifetime. This, these mental traumas that we face, these chemicals that are shot off in our bodies, everything that we do is a response. It's, it's metabolic, of course, but it, it, when we as adults are feeling it, imagine how we feel when our children are feeling it. And I'm, I'm gonna say something else real quick. If you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. So, and I really wanna watch, but I'm so aggravated, I can't see, I ain't got my glasses on, your faces, because it might not be your children. But guarantee, it could be your grandchildren or your great-grandchildren. Because as the world is intermingling and everybody is mixing up, don't nobody know who who is what and what is who. So, it might not be targeted at you today and it's targeted at us, but it could be targeted at you tomorrow. So if you don't wanna empathize with the way we feel, think about how, well, put yourself, because that's empathy, is to put yourself in my shoes. But think about it, it's gonna be you one day. It's gonna be. It's not an if and a maybe, it's gonna be. You might not want your daughter, your son with the next person, but guarantee, love don't see no colors and it has no boundaries. And it's gonna be. And you be okay with what you're okay with then. What you're okay with right now, be okay with then. Because it's gonna come full circle. And I'm with the brother, I was so upset with you, talking about fences. While these children, these babies, whether it's your baby or mine, these babies, you was a black baby and I was a black baby, we all felt that pain. And you, you can sit there all pretty because you in place, it's just a pretty face. I'm sure, I don't know who you are, so I really shouldn't say that. I'm sorry. Lord forgive me for that one. But it did anger me that you was talking about them fences and that, that stuff too. So anyways, that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Eric Miller.
Mr. Miller, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Uh, it's Eric Mills and I'm a Stantonian, for whatever that's worth. And I, I do have two things. As you can tell, I'm wearing the Heather Hire tribute shirt and the irony that it was two years ago today that we had the attitude problem drive into the crowd in Charlottesville. And the attitude problem has spread. And, um, as was said already, the chief executive of the country is fanning the attitude problem, okay? And fanning the racial strife in this country seems to be part of the chief executive's strategy. And unfortunately, there is another component of this fanning the flames. And that is, uh, the henchman of the chief executive, Mr. Bannon, uh, expressed a desire to dismantle the administrative state. And by not responding to the Ku Klux Klan, you are basically ceding your own authority. And the more that the strife is fanned in this country, the less influence you have as the administrative state. And that, that to me is the backend of the strategy that's going on. And it's also being assisted by Mr. Putin. I have gotten into a habit of responding to trolls on Facebook by thanking Mr. Putin for your feedback. And the problem I have is that if you don't speak in a clear voice, basically the backend of the strategy is the government bad movement, okay? And my, my call to you, as I will call my city council, is that you have to engage your constituents way more than you are right now, okay? And I see that there's a constable in the corner. And I'm gonna talk to them about making sure that the police and the community unify because it's all part of community here, police over here. That's one of the goals of this movement that's going on in this country, uh, that's being fueled by a foreign power. And I see it. And, uh, I am very concerned that the country could de-res in short order if we don't turn this thing around. And I say to you, you've gotta have way more engagement with your constituents because there is a movement to place you behind there and everybody over here. And that is my concern. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're gonna forego the closed meeting for number 12. Reconvene that in our next, if somebody has approval. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.